Good evening, everyone. I now call the Wednesday, December 1, 2021, meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowles, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Lefanja?
Here.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here. Please let the record reflect that all school board members are present and accounted for, as is our student rep Mohammed Al-Safir, who I will turn this meeting over to now.
All right, let's welcome Charlie Peoples, a 4th grade student at Smith Elementary School, who will lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance in their opening. Please stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
You may have a seat now.
Good evening. I'm here to read "I'm Enough" by Grace Byers. Like the sun, like the sun, I'm here to shine. Like the voice, I'm here to sing. Like the bird, I'm here to fly and soar high over everything. Like the trees, I'm here to grow, like the mountains, here to stand. Like time, I'm here to be and be everything I can. Like the champ, I'm here to fight. Like the heart, I'm here to love. Like a ladder, here to climb. And like the air, to rise above. Like the wind, I'm here to push. Like a rope, I'm here to pull. Like the rain, I'm here to pour and drip and fall until I'm full. Like the moon, I'm here to dream. Like the student, here to learn. Like the water, here to swell. Like fire, here to burn. Like the winner, I'm here to win. And if I don't, get up again. I know that I may sometimes cry, but even then, I'm here to try. I'm not meant to be like you, you're not meant to be like me. Sometimes we will get along, sometimes we'll disagree. I know that we don't look the same, our skin, our eyes, our hair, our frame. But that does not dictate our worth. We both have places here on earth. And in the end, we are right here to live a life of love, not fear. To each other, to help each other when it's tough to say, "Stay together." I'm enough.
Charlie, that was an amazing storytelling piece of story that you did. And I want to ask you a couple of questions, if you don't mind. How is school going for you?
Good.
Good? What do you do? Like, are there any activities you do in school or out of school?
Track.
Track, that is, wow. For a 4th grader, that is amazing. You have a lot of potential within you, Charlie. I also have one more question. What are you looking forward to during your winter break that is coming up?
To win all my competitions.
As you should. Can we have everyone that came with Charlie stand up so we can give them a recognition? Nice to see that you have so much support with you. You may now be seated. Thank you for giving us a very informative and knowledgeable story. Now, with us tonight, members of the Hampton High School Chorus, under the direction of Wanda Mitchell, will perform a medley to include a variety of traditional selections from their winter program. The compilation is entitled "Holiday Jazz." Please welcome them.
Now it's time to say goodbye, but how quickly's I get by? One last thing before we go, we'll sing it now so you will know. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Good times tonight to you every year. Good times for Christmas and a Happy New Year. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Happy New Year, Happy New Year, Happy New Year. We wish you a Merry Christmas.
Let's have another round of applause for this outstanding musician. That was amazing. And if that doesn't put you in the holiday spirit, I don't know what doesn't. And I want to acknowledge certain people who are in the audience who are very supportive of these young people. We've got the entire Hampton High School administration. Would you stand and be recognized, please? As well as the person who heads up Fine Arts for Hampton City Schools and does an amazing job and has for years and years and years. All Things Musical, Mr. Kelly D., cannot not recognize you. Do you have somebody you'd like to introduce as well? Oh, Ms. Mitchell. Thought you had gone out the door. She's an icon at Hampton High, and so many people can talk about the advances that they have made in the field of music due to the wonderful position you have put them in and allowed them to thrive. So we want to thank you especially. Any comments from board members? Now, before we move on to the rest of our agenda, Charlie, we just want to say on behalf of the board, we are so glad you came today. You know, "I'm Enough," I love it. Now, who did you say that was by? I was trying to write it down, but I didn't. And a couple of board members wanted to know who that was by.
Grace Byers.
Grace.
Grace.
Grace Byers?
Grace Byers.
Byers, okay, thank you. Because I think that was so appropriate that you chose that book. And to your parents, thank you for allowing Charlie to be here with us today. You've got a special young lady, I'm sure I don't have to tell you that, okay? Thank you again, and enjoy the evening. Okay, as we move on with our agenda, I'd like to first move to item 1.04, Adoption of the Agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Dr. Mason and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we approve the adoption of the agenda as presented. Any questions from board members? Hearing numb, Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Ms. Lefanja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item for business is the Consent Agenda, Item 2, which consists of 2.01 Personnel Report Number 21-21 and 2.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of November 3, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Ms. Banks Gray and seconded by Dr. Mason that we approve tonight's Consent Agenda. Is there any conversations or questions from board members? Hearing numb, Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Lefanja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Now, moving on to Item 3, Superintendent and Staff Reports. And for that, I'll turn the mic over to Dr. Smith, our outstanding superintendent who is still getting awards. I don't know how you do it. But thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. It's my pleasure at this time to introduce really our first presentation. That's One Division, One Transformation for the 2021-2022 school year. Ms. Hatcher, our Executive Director for Student Support, will introduce this particular presentation as it relates to climate and culture, building positive relationships in classrooms and schools. And I know that Ms. Heather Peterson will take the lead in the presentation itself. So, Ms. Hatcher?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Mason, members of our board, Dr. Smith, and our Hampton City Schools family. I am very pleased to be here tonight to share with you an update on the ongoing work around climate and culture. Last year, if you remember, we usually share this time of year, and I have gotten used to hearing great choral presentation or things like that. Last year, we were Zoom. So I am really pleased to be here tonight to hear an amazing story. I was actually getting into the concert mode, sitting back and wanting more and more songs. So it brings a smile to our faces, even under our masks. So, as you know, we have worked with our strategic plan and continue to emphasize the goal of creating safe and nurturing environments. And as part of that work, we've shared with you before, climate and culture really is the plate that everything sits on. And we have worked to create over the past five or six years a common definition of what culture is, really the heart of our organization and those common values that we share. And it sits in our climate, our environment, that changes day to day, as we know with COVID things, ups and downs and all of that. But with that heart and those values, we can sustain an amazing climate and culture. So the climate work here, we have chosen to marry that with socio-emotional learning and really use that as the focus of our work. And we've been doing that for about five years, and it is a common term now in many school divisions. But we really saw the benefit to that several years ago and focused our work around these areas of competency. So the skills, abilities, and attitudes that are relevant not just to our students but to adults as well. And so you see those core competencies here, developing a healthy identity, managing our emotions, goal-setting, having empathy, not just developing relationships, but being able to maintain those relationships and making sure those are healthy, making responsible and caring decisions. And this really defines and gives us a framework so that we can teach these skills to our students and support staff in doing that. And this, as we know, benefits them in life, ranging from school, of course, to home, communities, and really helps create being career and college life-ready. So we like our models, and we like for ourselves as a team and for others to be able to see our work in a visual model like this. So our team has worked on all student support teams, really looking at these areas with that core and center being socio-emotional learning. And so at this time, I am going to turn this presentation over to our Director of Climate and Culture, Heather Peterson, just to share with you some more details about this work.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. As Ms. Hatcher mentioned, we came up with this visual. I'm a visual person, much more than a down-the-details person. So we wanted to say, how could all of our departments and our staff and our students and our stakeholders really understand the central piece of this work? So as Ms. Hatcher said, you can see at the core is really that socio-emotional learning. But the offshoots and what we've really cultivated over the past two years is how socio-emotional learning impacts our positive teaching and learning environment and/or our climate and culture. Last year, as we were really embracing all of the aftermath of being in a pandemic, one of the things that we knew was going to be paramount was creating that culture of belonging and that sense of engagement, not just instructional engagement, but that young people and adults felt connected to their buildings and to one another. And then, of course, more than ever, we want to lift up both adult and student mental health and wellbeing, knowing how important that is. And what we know about socio-emotional learning is it is also a lever for equity. So it's not something we do, it's not something we're starting, but it's something that we are growing and continuing to focus on. So socio-emotional learning allows us to use that lens to ensure equity. So as we think about how we've entered back into this school year, last year I came before you and talked about the three Cs. As we began to engage in this school year, I said we don't need to come up with three new things. We need to continue to build that community, create that sense of connection, and we know more than ever the importance of consistency. As I'm in and out of schools on a daily basis, those routines, those expectations, it's like Groundhog Day for some of our teachers. But again, we're really trying to get our young people and our staff back in that sense of consistency. As we mentioned, we've had a rolling three-year plan, and we always are in a space where we want to keep it fluid because we are knowing that we're always trying to meet the ever-changing demands. But I'm also so proud that we're stepping into year four of this work. And as we look at that, this year is really about focus. So last year, we were able to begin to get assessment of our students from grades 3 through 12 in the spring, and we just completed another assessment this fall. In addition to grades 3 through 12 being assessed around socio-emotional learning, our pre-K and K students also get what's called the Child Behavior Rating Scale, which has 18 indicators on self-regulation and social regulation. And so we're able now to get some data to say, what really do our measurable outcomes around this work need to be? And how can we continue to focus and support this work? So that's what we'll be doing this year, is really looking at the data. Again, we will take it again in the spring so we can show areas of growth over time and continue to think about what are the outcomes that we're trying to achieve by being focused on this work. Again, we want to continue to enhance socio-emotional learning for all of our stakeholders. One of our big focuses for this year is how do we bring community and parents in as partners in this work and helping them to understand what this work is, how it impacts parents, how it impacts their students, and certainly our staff. I'm going to share with you in just a second that the Department of Ed has actually created guidance standards four years after we've been doing this work, just saying, and that we are in the process of conducting some mini walkthroughs around this work for two reasons. Not who's doing it, but what are they doing so we can share best practices? And then how can our department do a better job of continuing to support staff? So as we move into year five, we'll be taking this focus that we're really looking at this year of taking that data, both the quantifiable and the qualitative, to say, how can we really move to even deeper action moving forward? So as I mentioned, guidance standards were released, K-12 for socio-emotional learning this year from the state. This is what it looks like. Kindergarten has its standalone band, but then you can see their partner bands all the way through 12th grade. The exciting piece of this is that we had Hampton City Schools employees that were on committees to help do this work. So we got some inside perspective on that. So that's really exciting. DOE's response to this is in an effort to lift up those five Cs, that portrait of a graduate that we have, that they know the integral importance of these socio-emotional standards. And they too are using the work of Castle, the Collaborative for Academic Social Emotional Learning. So we don't have to do anything different than what we've already been doing, just continue to identify what's working and what other supports do we need to put into place. So just want to share with you what we have committed to this year as far as supports and tools. We've had a virtual toolkit for four years now, so we continue to make upgrades to that and try to make it as user-friendly as possible. At least twice a month, staff receive electronic cell tips. And then onsite support is I'm able to attend some of the CLT meetings or school leadership team meetings to help people navigate through this work. And as I mentioned, we've begun to do some brief cell walkthroughs at some of our buildings as well. We're going to continue with that student assessment, as I mentioned, and then we have a couple of division-wide cell activities. So just unpacking those really quickly for you. I've shared with you before the toolkit that can be accessed through the Hampton City Schools website. This is what it looks like when we pull this up. The big five key areas, those are interactive buttons that you can push. And when you pull that up, it has for each of the five competencies, resources for elementary, middle, and high. And so when you click on that, it gives you access to different activities that are able to use in the classroom. In addition to that, knowing that staff are busy, what I like to do is keep this in front of them. So twice a month, they receive an email that has what looks just like this. So I'm giving you a sample, the cell tips. So it gives them reminders, are you trying to build self-awareness? This might be an activity that you want to do. Again, thinking about we had just completed the first nine weeks when this went out, so what is working and making sure to remind them to celebrate it and that we need to always be in a mindfulness of reteaching those expectations. Again, getting student feedback, that we want to think about ways of asking kids, what should we possibly be doing or could be doing differently in the class? Again, just some reminders of things for them to consider or to remember about socio-emotional learning. And I always try to put a couple of videos in. This is ready to go, so a teacher could copy this slide deck and go right to town with that, so not having to do something additional. One of the big things we've pushed this year is normalizing asking for help in the classroom. And that do students know when they get stuck? And that they're going to get stuck, what they should do? So we've really put this into practice. And then also telling administrators or asking administrators, how do your staff know when they get stuck, how they should ask for help also? This was promoting World Kindness Day, which we just celebrated in November, and it was on a Saturday, so we did a whole week of kindness. You might have seen that on social media. It was, I'll show you some pictures from that in just a second. And I always like to try to wrap it up with something positive, to thank teachers, appreciate them, remind them. We know that this work isn't easy, but you make the biggest difference. The cell student survey was completed a couple of weeks ago. We are just now getting the data back, but at a first glance, our overarching successes continue to be around supportive relationships. That's where we were in the spring of last year, and this one resoundingly, 3 through 12 was one that shone through. Not only supportive relationships with staff, but with peers and also people outside of the building. Our priorities continue to look like this, that emotional regulation, dealing with those challenging feelings, and then for our secondary students, that sense of belonging. Again, after all we've been through, it is not shocking that these remain our priorities. We're going to be digging deeper into the data before winter break and then putting out protocols for schools for how they can look at the data and what next steps they might want to consider taking. I mentioned World Kindness Day. These are our division-wide, two big activities that we've pushed. Last year, we started this, and then this year I got to partner with Ms. Coral, and she helped me kind of blow it up. So we challenged people for a week of kindness to do different things. The group down here, we're doing kindness grams. The school nurse at Jones hopped on board and made all kinds of great signs. Over at Phoenix, they were putting up Post-Its on students' lockers saying kind things. So lots more than this, I just didn't want to make the slide too busy, but it was great to see. And then last March, they introduced International Cell Day. It was at the end of March last year. So we took the ball and ran with that and did a couple of things. We challenged schools to do that specific activities on Friday that really lifted up socio-emotional learning and to post about them. But then we also put out the option for peers to be able to nominate people who were really demonstrating socio-emotional learning or modeling it. And that became the cell staff shout-outs. And when Ms. Coral and I were first brainstorming about this, she said, "I hope we get enough." And we had to put so many out. It was great. We had, I think, over 65 nominations, not just teachers, but as you can see, Mr. Cooper from Central Office, who's in the Social Work Department. So it was really great, and we're excited to build on this momentum. So Cell Day will be March 11th this year, and so we'll begin to start promoting that as well. And then just finally, we shared this with staff at the beginning of the year. I did a I did a lot of professional learning over the summer. But overarching, we want staff to recognize that these really need to be our commitments, that we want to define our students based on their potential. It's really easy, over what's happened the past 19 months, to really think about what don't our kids have. But we want to define them by their potential. And that we have to make that belonging, that connection, and that engagement a priority, not just for our students, but for our staff also. And that commit to growing those socio-emotional competencies for all of our stakeholders. And then, this last one was really big and just trying to, again, that, that school isn't a place to fix our students, they're not broken. It's a place to help our students grow while we ensure they have that access, opportunities, supports, and outcomes necessary. So, thank you all so much. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Thanks to both of you. Any questions from board members? Yes, Ms. Banks-Grey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Fantastic presentation, ladies. I just appreciate the work that you guys have committed to. And I want to let you know that I really appreciate you getting the feedback from our students. That is huge to hear from our actual students that are in place that are receiving this. Also, I just wanted to know if you guys, you know, I know when you're analyzing data, you have those aha moments. Did y'all experience any of those types of aha, like, "Wow, look at this outcome here as we're analyzing this data"?
Yeah, I would say my initial one, and we actually have a data meeting to dig deeper, but my initial one is that the three through five students seemed to have a little bit more difficulty when it came to listening to each other's perspec-- now that they're back in person, like, the scores in the spring were a little bit higher, I think, because they could mute or turn their cameras off if they wanted to. So, their scores actually went down, but the secondary scores jumped up as if the young people were glad to be back into that space of being able to be in person. That's the initial component. And Ms. Thatcher brought up a great point when I made that this morning about, you know, younger students still need to develop those skills to navigate, you know, how do we get along when we are together?
Wonderful. Thank you, ladies, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Banks-Grey. Yes, Dr. Mason.
No question, always just comments, you know, when it comes to our socio-emotional stuff. You guys are doing a wonderful job. It was great to see the piece on equity, you know, because that is basically one of the hallmarks when you look at trying to make sure that you are doing what's necessary. You know, oftentimes, we want to make sure that people are getting equal treatment, but we have to make sure they're getting what they need. And that's the premise for everything that's being done. So, definitely commending you all on that. And then, utilizing the Child Behavior Rating Scale, you know, being able to collect data. That's how we always know what it is that we're doing. We can use that information to improve upon what we're doing to make our system better, because we know we're great, you know? But we can always improve and continue to grow, because as children change every day, their needs change. And so, looking at that data is certainly going to do that. And I like the part about normalizing asking for help, especially coming out of COVID, you know? And not just for the students, but for the teachers also. You know, we're all in a place right now that we're navigating some uncharted territory. And so, being able to put people in a place to say, "Hey, listen, I need help." You know, so I like that. And the last thing I'm going to say, just looking at Slide 2022, just from the student data, looking at all of the, you know, the successes with the supportive relationships, but looking at what the priorities are going to be. Emotional regulation, challenging feelings, and a sense of belonging. All of that gets right back into some of the direct effects that we've seen across the board as it relates to mental health needs as a result of COVID and isolation and students, you know, and parents being in a lockdown situation. So, kudos to you all for the work that you continue to do in this area, because we know that as we continue to move forward, mental health and what we're doing and all of the socio-emotional learning programs that are in place is truly going to help our children to be able to do so many things in the community and beyond. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Mason. And I just want to make one comment on your comment about the equity piece. One of the things that I always lift up in our division that we should also be so proud of, this is a tier-one effort. So, this is for all students. It's not for students who go to the office or a certain group of students. This is for all students and all staff. So, we want to ensure, as you said, that access and those opportunities and those resources for all.
Yes, thank you.
That's great. Any other board members?
I just have one comment, Madam Chair. Heather, thank you so much for this. Ms. Thatcher, thank you so much. And I'm always excited. You make me excited when you do a presentation. But I just want to acknowledge the piece that you did on self-awareness, where this information is available to the community and also parents, that they can also do their own self-assessment based on the grade level of their students. So, they can know, they do an assessment at home and know exactly where their child or children reside and know what they need to do from their system. And so, this is fantastic, that it also can be done at home. So, I think this is a great resource for families. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Samuel. Any other board members? Mrs. Alzweer?
Yes, first of all, thank you for the great presentation. I do have a question, though, for you, if you don't mind. You talked about SEL Day, which is being held March 11th. Will that day be used for students and staff to incorporate a lot of the action part into learning and teaching? For example, like, just setting a day where teachers talk to students, you know, with their emotional well-being, as well as students communicating to staff about their well-being and vice versa? So, is that day, or is there any day, or do you plan on making a day for where students and staff can communicate their socio-emotional learning?
We try to get them to do it every single day, to be honest with you. Cell Day, I mean, is definitely a day to have platforms and to be able to have that communication. Some people worked on different projects around that as well, but when we really think about the question that you're asking, we want that to be something that's seamlessly woven into any day. I know some teachers do check-ins on a daily basis, or they'll do a check-in before a big project. They'll talk about something that's happening in the community and try to get student reaction to that. So, as I'm hearing those practices, I'm trying to share it with teachers across the board. Hey, here's a great question stem to ask your students, depending on if they're four or they're 18. So, we're really, while we're highlighting Cell Day as a big day, it's an international day. We want that type of activity to go on on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other board members? Well, I think Mr. Samuel summed it up when he said fantastic. Absolutely. And just as an aside, this board is, you know, committed to lifting up socio-emotional learning as well. And with that said, we are in conjunction with the administration, looking at doing some additional pieces that will ultimately benefit our students. Is that a correct assessment, Dr. Smith?
That is, Madam Chair.
Okay, and we'll be hearing about that later, I would assume.
We will. Looking forward to, I think, in January, presenting to the board some additional work in this particular area as we focus on addressing the social and emotional needs as it relates to staff. And so, more to come in that regard, and we look forward to sharing with the board more comprehensive plan.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your support.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. At this time, I think Ms. Ruth, our Executive Director for Human Resources, will present and share the OSHA Emergency Temporary Standard Vaccination and Testing Mandate. And so, we'll start there, and she'll provide context as to where we are in our planning stage and also with recognition that we understand that we're in a holding pattern at this particular point in time. But we want to, as you have said, Madam Chair, I think, to be ready, so we don't have to get ready. And so--
I live by that mantra.
So, we want to be ready, so we don't have to get ready. So, Ms. Ruth Williams, take the lead.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, and good evening. And as Dr. Smith mentioned, we are, some things are going to be in a holding pattern. However, we are going to be asking the board to continue taking some actions so that we will be ready when the time comes. I know that there has been a lot in the news about the mandate, and I hope that I'm able to clarify some things that are going on and the impact that they will have on Hampton City Schools. So, on November 4th of 2021, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, or OSHA, issued an emergency temporary standard, which you may hear me refer to as an ETS, that mandates employers with 100 or more employees implement, develop, implement, and enforce a mandatory COVID-19 vaccination policy. So, obviously, that fits our description. We do have 3,200 employees. But it's important to note that currently, OSHA has suspended its activities related to the implementation and enforcement of the emergency standard, pending future development in the litigation. Within probably hours of OSHA announcing the mandate, there were multiple lawsuits from around the country. In excess of 20, I think it's 27 individual lawsuits that were issued. In addition, the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals, which comes out of the Louisiana area, I don't remember all the Louisiana, I don't remember all the states, but they issued a stay on the mandate. Because there were, there were so much litigation, the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, which is out of the Ohio area, was given the task of reviewing all of the lawsuits. And so, they will take a look at the legality and the constitutionality of the emergency standard. And at this point, it is unlikely that the court will take action prior to December 10th. There has been some, some new information in the, in the news media that it will be no earlier than December 10th. So, there is also pressure from the White House for the courts to act more quickly. So, we are still kind of in that holding pattern. But based on the uncertainty, we are going to continue to take steps to ensure that we are in compliance in the event that it is upheld. So, what does this mean for Hampton City Schools? It does mean that within 30 days of the approval or of the court making a decision if they uphold it, that we will need to adopt a policy. And with the permission of Dr. Smith, I am going to request that the school board approve this policy tonight. It is currently on the First Read Agenda. I'm asking your permission to treat this presentation as the First Read of the policy and that the policy then be moved to the Deliberation Agenda and the Action Agenda. And the reason that I'm asking for this is because if the court makes a ruling at some point in December, the, the School Division will be required to have a policy in place before the next regularly scheduled school board meeting, which is currently scheduled for January 19th, 2022. And so, in order to be compliant, should the courts make a decision in December, we are going to ask that the policy be approved this evening. If, for some reason, the emergency standard is not upheld, then obviously, moving forward, we would ask that the school board suspend the policy, and we would not take any action. So, I would like to take a few minutes to review the proposed policy. It is listed as Policy GF on the First Read Agenda. This policy applies to all current, full-time, part-time, and temporary Hampton City Schools employees, and it would also apply to any new employees who are hired while the emergency standard is in place. The emergency standard allows employers a choice of either requiring all employees to be vaccinated unless there is a medical or religious exemption that has been approved, or we can allow employees to submit to weekly testing in lieu of being vaccinated. We are recommending that all employees be fully vaccinated or submit to weekly testing. The testing is an accommodation for those who are unable, for whatever reason, to receive the vaccine. And so, that, that is what we are proposing in the policy. The policy also requires all employees to verify their vaccination status and provide proof of vaccination as applicable. And the policy also has information about the fact that, you know, if employees are not truthful with the information that they provide us, that there will be consequences up to and including a recommendation for dismissal. And that is per the OSHA guidelines. You will notice that the policy is relatively short. And we have purposely kept it broad, but short, because based on the uncertainty of the emergency standard, we did not want to include dates or procedural details that might require frequent revisions by the school board. And as such, the policy also requires the superintendent or his designee to establish procedures that will be utilized to implement and enforce the emergency standard. And these guidelines will be based on information from both OSHA and from VSBA. But again, in order to, to be flexible, given the fluidity of the situation, we have left the policy very broad. The guidelines will, at a minimum, include the following, and will have the date by which all employees must be vaccinated or begin submitting weekly COVID-19 testing results. And again, this date will be dependent on when the Sixth Court of, the Sixth Court of Appeals, Circuit Court of Appeals takes action and if they uphold the mandate. If the mandate is not upheld, then, then we will not move forward with the process. We will also put in place a process for employees to notify Human Resources of their vaccination start status. We've actually already started that process. And the original deadline for employees was December 6th. Because we now know that the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals will not be taking action until after December 10th, we are going to extend that deadline until further notice. The guidelines will also include a process for employees to request an exception for the mandate. It is important to note that the option for weekly testing is actually an accommodation for those folks who have either a medical or religious exemption from the vaccination. So, if someone were to request an exemption to the mandate, it's, they're actually going to be submitting a request for an exemption from testing. It's not from getting the vaccination. We, we are not concerned about why someone may not be vaccinated. We have already, we are already presenting an accommodation for that based on the fact that we're allowing testing. And again, the guidelines will also include a progressive disciplinary process for those employees who do not have a legally valid claim for an exception, but refuse to be vaccinated and subsequently refuse to submit to weekly COVID, or submit their weekly COVID testing results. What will be required of the School Division? If the emergency standard is upheld, we will be required to maintain records and a roster of each employee's vaccination status. Now, I have, over the course of the last couple of weeks, received concerns from multiple employees about the security of these records. And so, I'd like to take a moment to address that in the event the board gets any questions and also so our family members at home can hear the information. Currently, there are only two people who have access to the vaccination verification information, and that is me and Glory Gill, who is our Director of Health Services. We are the only two who have access to the data. The information is stored on Google servers. And inasmuch as Google is extremely motivated to have a secure system for their clients, they have best-in-class resources for protecting against unauthorized access to the information. So, we do feel that the information that we have stored is very safe. Once the verification window is closed, the information will be downloaded and stored on a secured memory stick in either my office or Ms. Gill's office, so that it won't be living out on anywhere on the internet anymore. Again, the original deadline for completing the process was December 6th. We are going to extend our verification deadline until further notice. We'll be sending information about that out to employees tomorrow. If the emergency standard is not upheld, all information that has currently been submitted will be deleted. So, it won't exist anywhere. Another requirement for-- Another requirement for the school division is to support employees by providing them with time to either go get their vaccines and/or if they have an adverse reaction to the vaccine, we're required to provide paid sick leave. Honestly, we've been doing this since vaccines became available in January of 2021. And we will continue to do so, it's part of our COVID leave, and we will continue to do so whether the mandate is upheld or One of the final requirements is, again, that we ensure that employees who are not fully vaccinated be tested. And if the emergency standard is upheld, a start date for testing will be determined based on the new effective date for the standard. The guidelines will include information on testing options and locations. And it's important to note that the guidelines will not be finalized until we complete the verification process, because what we are able to do, and I don't know what the final numbers will be, but let's say if we have 200 employees who are not fully vaccinated, what we are able to do for them is much different than the process we may use if we've got 1,000 employees who are not fully vaccinated. And so those guidelines will be finalized once we have the verification process complete. And with that, are there any questions from the board?
Any questions? I'm sure we've got questions, but let me just set the stage to make sure I've got this right.
Okay.
The reason that it's important that we try to move this tonight, action, is because this has to be in place before our next regularly scheduled board meeting, which is not until January 19th of 2022.
Maybe. Well, so this is part of that, we don't know for sure when the Sixth Circuit, it's really hard to say Sixth Circuit Court, at least it is for me. So we don't know exactly when the court is going to take action. It has been shared that it will be sometime after December 10th. So if they take action between December 10th and when we go out for winter break, we would have to have a policy in place somewhere between January 10th and December 18th, I mean January 18th. January, yeah, January 10th and January 18th.
Yeah, because it's the day before the meeting.
And so, yes, that is why, now, if they don't take action until January 5th, then we will just be ahead of the game.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so this, what this does is this puts us in a position to already have a game plan.
Yes.
A very broad game plan, but a game plan nonetheless.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Any questions from board members? Yes, Mr. Samuels?
So thank you so much, Ms. Ruth, for this presentation. So as you were talking, and I want to apologize for not asking you these questions because I had a copy of this report prior and the policy. But as you were talking, something came to mind that, so will it be, and it is relating to the testing kits. So will it be cost prohibitive for Hampton City School to offer or provide testing kits to staff?
Do you mean the home testing kits?
The home testing kits.
The mandate specifically prohibits the use of home testing kits
Okay.
for this particular mandate. So we've not looked at all as to whether or not it's cost prohibitive. We will be offering the testing at the wellness center, or, yeah, at the wellness center, and that will be at no cost. And honestly, I've had to be tested two or three times, and I've never had to pay for it. It is dependent upon where you go. If you go to CVS or Rite Aid, you're not going to be charged. Now, if you decide to go to the Minute, or not the Minute Clinic, but like the Riverside, what their
Patient first?
Yeah, patient first, thank you. Then, yes, you probably are going to be charged.
Okay.
But we'll work with employees. Again, what we can do for, you know, if we've got 100 people that need the vaccine, we can have them all seen at the health center. That won't be a problem. If there are 1,000 people that need to be tested weekly, then we're going to have to look at some alternate solutions.
Okay.
And I just don't, I can tell you that based on the data I have right now, about a third of our employees have responded. And if you extrapolate that out, we'd probably have about 150 people. But it could be that it's all the folks who aren't vaccinated who haven't responded yet. So I don't, I'm just not sure.
And might I also add, Madam Chair, that one of the considerations that we have on the table, and that is also to potentially work with a vendor and to have designated sites within the school division. So if the capacity would exceed what we can, or what we would typically be able to handle at the wellness center, we may very well contract services. That's one of the considerations that we have on the table as well that we're discussing in that regard.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Any other questions? Oh, yes, Mr. Sophia.
So, yes, if the ETS, the emergency standard, is not upheld, then you recommend that the policy becomes suspended, yes?
Yes, because it is very likely whether the court either upholds or overturns the mandate
Right.
that there will be additional lawsuits, and this will eventually end up in the Supreme Court. So what we would do first would be to request that the policy be suspended, and then when it finally makes its way through the Supreme Court, we would either bring it back or recommend that it be deleted altogether.
Okay, so if the ETS gets upheld, but let's say in a plausible situation that could happen, that later down on the road, it gets amended or gets terminated altogether, what do you recommend for the school board to do? Would you propose that the policy we enacted, since it was upheld at first, to be amended as well or terminated?
Number one, I would be asking for advice from Ms. Reeves, but it is my guess that even if it is upheld, that we will end up in the exact same situation that we're in now, that OSHA will suspend activity until the Supreme Court makes a final decision. But if it is in place and there are no stays, then we would have to follow it because it would be, you know, in effect, a law that we would be required to follow.
All right, thank you.
But I really do anticipate that until it goes through the Supreme Court, it will either remain suspended or another circuit court will again try to stay the ruling.
Dr. Smith, thank you.
Sure, Madam Chair, may I also add, and I don't know that this would further complicate the discussion, but really, the verbiage of the motion might include, and I'm just going to say, that the approval of policy GF, if the board decides to move forward in terms of deliberation, and then subsequent to that, to take action, it might include the approval of policy GF pending the approval of OSHA. Otherwise, the policy will be suspended. Does that complicate things, Madam?
Well, you already have the authority and have been given the authority to suspend policies that are needed to be suspended as a result of this emergency and this crisis. So I'm not sure.
So just, we would not need that. Okay, perfect.
Correct.
Okay, so we would use that vehicle. Okay, just wanted to.
Dr. Woodhouse, I saw you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Ruth, I think this is a wonderful idea to get ahead of this. I do want to ask this question for clarity. Refuser to be vaccinated because of religious reasons or health concerns, those individuals would still need the daily testing, am I correct?
It's not daily testing, it's weekly testing.
Weekly, I mean, I'm sorry, weekly testing.
Yes.
They would still need the weekly testing.
That would be the accommodation for their exemption from getting the vaccine, is that they must submit to weekly testing.
And if they refused that, then we would have to take further action.
Correct. And that's why one of the components to both the policy, and it will be in the guidelines, is that there be a progressive disciplinary language included.
So now, we have not decided what that would be so far in this policy. So we would have to go back to the drawing board?
Well, we won't have to go back to the drawing board. We have a progressive disciplinary policy already in place, and I'm sure that that will be the model for any progressive discipline that is applicable to this particular emergency standard. So, no, we're not starting from scratch. We already have a very solid policy on which to build and make specific to this situation.
Okay, thank you.
Did I answer you, Dr. Woodhouse?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
I just have a follow-up question from Ms. Ruth. On bullet four, if we could just go back. So OSHA is the one
Bullet four.
Yes, right, they're the progressive discipline, and so that came from OSHA, because, so if someone either refused or declined, is there any way that we can put our own verbiage to this, or this basically, it is what it is, and we are stuck with this?
This particular language does come from the OSHA mandate.
Okay.
I mean, the guidelines, we can expand and use some of our own verbiage, yes. But the intent behind this bullet must remain in our policy.
But we develop the guidelines.
We will develop the guidelines, yes.
We have some latitude there, once we get there.
Yeah, we have some latitude there, okay.
Yes.
Now, looking this way. Yes, Mr. Kilgore?
Yeah, I got several questions, Ms. Ruth. The temporary standard by title is vaccines, testings, and face coverings.
Correct.
And so we currently are under an executive order from the Virginia governor mandating face coverings.
Correct.
But if that was to expire, the temporary standard says face coverings will be required for unvaccinated employees.
Correct.
Is there a reason we're not including that in the policy?
Because I was going to include that in the guidelines.
Yeah, this is just a broad policy that says this is OSHA, and this is what they're asking us to do. But in terms of guidelines and next steps and what happens if, we have to develop that later.
Correct.
Okay, it's in the OSHA document, is my point.
But, Mr. Kilgore, we're not putting the entire OSHA into a policy because
This is an umbrella policy.
it holds us to certain dates and specific things that have to be done, including, like in some places, it's vaccination or firing, and we're not doing that.
No.
We're going to be able to be much more fluid and much more nimble because we are putting all of those little steps, the protocols and the ways that we're going to put in. That is all going to be in guidelines, not in the policy. The policy says that the superintendent or his designee has the right to promulgate these guidelines as needed to follow what OSHA and what, 16 Virginia 252220, which is our OSHA, and it is a nine-page document in and of itself under the Virginia guidelines. All of that is going to be included in guidelines so we can be far more nimble and fluid.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. So this policy is going to say either vaccinate, fully vaccinated, or weekly testing.
Correct.
Right.
But I know in the OSHA document, it talked about, well, if I test positive for COVID, I don't weekly test for 90 days.
Correct, and all of that will be in the guidelines.
That will be in the guidelines, not in the policy that says weekly testing.
Correct. There are, if I put everything in the policy that is in the OSHA standards, we'd have a 10 to 12-page policy.
Right.
And it would not allow us to be, as, to use Nancy, Ms. Reeves' terms, nimble or, you know.
Flexible.
Flexible.
Right.
So that's why it's
I don't mind being nimble and flexible. I don't want to be in conflict.
We have reviewed this with V S B A, and Ms. Reeves has reviewed it, and everybody seems to be okay with leaving it broad and short.
So it's more the umbrella policy, and all those tentacles that come under will be guidelines as we move forward?
Correct.
Okay.
And if we discover that there's a need to really put something in the policy, then absolutely, we would come back to you and ask for a revision. But the legal guidance we have received from both Ms. Reeves and V S B A is that we are going down a good path.
Okay. And so I think I'm comfortable with what Dr. Smith said, because if we move this to action, we vote on this policy, it becomes effective tonight. But we are not going to implement the requirements of this policy tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Kilgore?
No, I said, thank you.
Ms. Banks-Grey?
I was going to answer.
You okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Mason?
Just a couple of things. Excuse me. When I look at slide number nine, just talking about the requirements and all for the school division in terms of the seven days before returning to work, you know, how will this information, I guess, be handled at the school level or at their work location so that their privacy and health information still remains intact?
Well, we are going to have to notify, so I'm Daisy Duck, and I work at Aberdeen Elementary, and I am not fully vaccinated, for whatever reason. Human Resources is going to have to notify the principal of Aberdeen Elementary that Daisy Duck is not fully vaccinated and that she is going to have to go for weekly testing. We're not going to give any other information than that, and because this is a legal mandate, it is not considered a HIPAA violation. It's just a statement of fact. You are vaccinated or you aren't. It's not really, it's not really medical information. So I'm not sure I'm really answering your question.
I guess, you know, because there are medical reasons why some people may not become vaccinated.
We're not going to share that. We're not, we're not sharing with them. Principals aren't going to know why somebody has to be vaccinated. It could be I'm not vaccinated because I do have a medical condition that prevents me from being vaccinated. It could be that I'm not vaccinated because my religious beliefs don't allow me to be vaccinated. It could be that I'm not vaccinated because I just don't want to do it. Could be I'm afraid of needles. It could be I'm just, I don't think that it's something that I want to do. So we don't care why folks aren't vaccinated, and we're not going to share information with anybody as to why people aren't vaccinated. When people have tried to tell me why they're not vaccinated, I ask them not to. I don't want to know why you're not vaccinated. It does not apply in this particular situation. So we're not going to be sharing any, we're not gathering any medical information. We're not sharing any information. Does that help?
Yes. And then also, in terms of the religious and medical exemptions, will we be developing our own guidelines for that or looking at the OSHA guidelines for that particularly?
We already have exemption forms. It's part of the ADA job accommodation request form, and we already have forms that have been legally vetted, so we will be using those.
Okay, so I want to make sure it's nothing different than we're already using. Okay, thank you.
Well, it's a little bit different because it's specific to, it's narrow and specific to COVID as opposed to any other reason that I might need a medical accommodation. So it is, but it is based on the general form. But it is, it is a form we use for all things COVID-related and job accommodations.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Samuels, I do too. She just made me think of something. Okay, yes.
Ms. Ruth, I know this is all, you know, fluid and all coming out, so I'm not wanting you to take it as I'm trying to attack you or whatever. I just want us to think
I'm just the messenger. It's all good.
Yeah, just think openly. And so you mentioned that the information will be emailed to the principal to notify the staff at a particular school. Is that so, Ms. Reeves?
Well, the information that will be sent to administrators, once we are, if this is upheld and if we are required to do the vaccine verifications and the testing, each administrator, building principals, department heads, D L T, anybody who has people that are reporting to them, will receive a list that states the following three people in your department or school are not fully vaccinated and are not fully vaccinated, and therefore, you will need to work with them so that they can be tested each week. And that's the only information that's going to be shared. Again, no information about why they're not vaccinated, don't care.
Yeah.
Don't need to know. So, so that is the information that will be shared. It's just, these three people, you're going to have to work with because every week, they're going to have to go and get tested. And in some instances, as of, for instance, if I'm a, if I'm a bus driver, then, you know, Mr. Wills is going to have to work with this person to make sure that if they're getting tested, it's not interfering with bus routes. Same thing with food service, that it's not interfering with, with preparing meals. And if it is going to interfere with a bus route or, or preparing meals or teaching in a classroom, that we have a substitute in place-
Yeah, understand.
-to cover that.
But there could be their more discreet way to just, for, like, for someone who don't want their information not even be known by the administrator. Is there a more discreet way for H R to send that information directly to that person? And then that's between them on the H R, between you, that person, or Ms. Kilgore?
I can't be responsible for the works, the, the work schedules and the testing schedules-
It's a lot.
-for 3,200 employe- I, not that we'll have 3,200 employees that need testing, but there is a business need for the supervisor to know whether or not someone requires weekly testing. And so, again, there's no information shared about why the employee needs testing. But we are on, on very sound legal ground for providing this information to administrators. There's, it's just, you know, that Daisy Duck and, and Minnie Mouse have got to get tested.
Mr. Samuels, if it helps you, when there is an ADA accommodation needed, it has to be shared with the administrator. So, we already do it for those kinds of things. This is no different.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yes.
I have so much as a question, as a comment, that I can appreciate the school division offering the opportunity for the Health and Wellness Center to afford the individuals who are not vaccinated an opportunity to be tested. I realize that there's limits on how many number of individuals can be tested there. But I think it allows our, our teachers and our staff to get tested quickly, get the results quickly, and get back to work hopefully. Because that is, in my opinion, the major implication here. You know, will it result in individuals not being able to teach or not being able to perform their duties daily for our students? And so, having those opportunities for individuals to be tested quickly and accurately and getting them back to work, I feel like the division taking that on is, is tremendous. And, and I think it eliminates individuals from running around town trying to find a test, spending more hours than may be necessary away from students and, and, you know, away from their roles. And so, I'm, I feel good about the opportunity for partnership. If there is more individuals than what can be addressed at the Health and Wellness Center, I really feel good about a partnership happening because I do feel like that the best thing in our interest is to get our folk tested that are not vaccinated and get them back to work as quickly as possible.
That's a good point.
Yes, thank you.
Any other board members? Let me just ask, I have two questions.
Sure.
Really, one is just for clarification and a refresher on how we already do business-
Sure.
-as it relates to the vaccination and the testing. As a refresher and to remind everybody, I'm an employee. How do you know I have received my COVID vaccinations? And I'm saying that so we don't have an Aaron Rodgers debacle, but just how, how do you know?
Today, and, and before the OSHA mandate, we didn't know. Now, if you went through one of the Hampton City Schools vaccination clinics, yes, we knew. But there are many people who got their vaccinations through their own doctors, through other vaccine clinics. So, we didn't really know prior to this mandate. We will, i- if it's upheld, we will know through the verification process. But today, I couldn't tell you, unless somebody's told me that they've been vaccinated, I couldn't tell you who has and who has not.
So, up to today, we really don't have proof of me being vaccinated?
Well, we have started to gather the proof. And right now, about a third of our employees have completed the verification process. So, we are starting to get the proof. And, and the, and prior to this mandate, we haven't had a need to know because we weren't mandating any testing.
Right. Okay. And the second piece that you brought it to mind when you said "fully vaccinated", and it just kind of rang a bell in terms of this being upheld? If this is upheld, and I am not fully vaccinated, but I got one shot, do I have to resort to weekly testing?
You would have to resort to weekly testing until two weeks after your second shot.
Okay, okay.
And in the original information that we sent out to employees, based on the original deadlines that were in place, we outlined for them exactly what the due dates would be. So, if I was going to get Moderna, I had to have the shot, the first vaccine by X date and the second vaccine by Z date in order to be fully vaccinated on January 4th. We will do that same chart for employees once we know what the effective dates will be.
Okay.
So, they'll know exactly. And there's, there is time for folks to get fully vaccinated if, if the mandate is upheld because there were 60 days from the, the date it was introduced to when the testing had to begin. So, we will, we will absolutely let folks know. So, they have the opportunity to be fully vaccinated if they are able to and if they choose to prior to the implementation date.
Okay, I think that'd be helpful. Okay, yes, yes, Mrs. Samuels. I know one question makes you think of another question, right?
So, well, OSHA has like a repository place where local agencies or whomever can go and see if someone is vaccinated.
I am not aware of OSHA having anything like that. Now, the Virginia Department of Health-
Yes, that's the-
-does have, does have that information. If you've been vaccinated in Virginia.
Yes.
If, if you're on vacation in North Carolina and you decide, hey, there's not a line at the C V S. I'm going to get my vaccination while I'm here, then they are not going to have a record of that.
So, that's what sparked my question because the Virginia Department of Health has that.
But we can't really go, I'm, we should not be going and asking the Virginia-
No, 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 and I'm not saying that for us to do so unless it's shared.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he's just making sure there is a repository that has it somewhere.
Yes.
Right?
As far as I know, each state maintains their own records. I can only speak for the Virginia Department of Health, and they do have record of everyone who's received first vaccination, second vaccination, and/or their booster shot, if that's applicable.
Okay.
And I'll give an example, Madam Chair. For example, today, I attended a meeting in Norfolk, and I was required as superintendent prior to entering the facility or prior to entering into the room where the meeting was held, I had to show evidence of, of the fact that I had been fully vaccinated. And so, I took a picture of my, of my card and made it available via my cellphone so that they had evidence that I had been fully vaccinated. So, it's happening across many, across the region. But that was just one example.
And that's a great example because you're talking about a meeting in Norfolk. We went to a restaurant in Norfolk and had to show it.
Yeah, well, Dr. Smith, was that Norfolk State University where you had to show your verification? Because we do that at Norfolk.
You do?
Yes, sir.
Something about the whole green gold, right?
Okay. Well, Ms. Ruth, you are repository of information. You and, uh, the Luscher's attorney, Ms. Reeves, I, I certainly appreciate the hard work because I know this is like nailing Jello to a tree.
Yes.
It is not easy. And trying to anticipate what could happen, what would happen, but be ready for it all the same. I can tell, I take my hat off to you. We really do appreciate that.
Thank you. Well, you even asked about the Virginia Department of Health. Once I got mine, they sent me notice, and I have a Q R, a personal Q R code-
Yes.
-that it, that's, that's on my photo part of my phone, and all I have to do is show the Q R code and my whole vaccine history comes up everywhere.
That's awesome, awesome. Okay.
Yes, and, and we do have instructions for our employees on how they can do that if they choose to do so. We've already shared that information with staff.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruth. I, I appreciate it.
I do too.
Absolutely.
I think it's amazing.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
So, am, am I clear that 7.14 deliberation first read is now going to be 6.12 on items for action?
Can we make that a motion when we get to deliberation first read or do it now?
I, I would do it now because action comes before first read.
But you've got a thing here called additional items for action. See?
I guess we could do it that way. You can do it either way.
Okay. I just saw that and I thought that was-
You can do it either.
Okay, we'll just wait till we get that. Thank you.
Because I'm going to have you to move something.
Okay, yes, we do. I, I thought we might, Ms. Reeves. We're moving and shaking tonight.
We've been busy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And now, we'll ask Ms. Branch to come forward and provide the board with the financial report.
Good evening, Madam Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Dr. Mason, School Board members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. Tonight, it's my pleasure to present the October 2021 Monthly Operating Report. At the end of October, our revenues totaled $52.9 million, and we're approximately 14% higher when compared to the prior fiscal year. Our cumulative expenditures and encumbrances totaled $89.3 million, and we're approximately 19% higher than when compared to last year. Our budget is based on an average daily membership of $18,813, and we did submit our fall September 30th membership count to the Virginia Department of Education, and that number was $18,863. So, that is a difference of 50 students, an increase of 50 students. That number will be utilized for the reforecasts for the state's budget, which we will receive in mid-December. And we expect that, that additional 50 students, there should be some slight increase in state funding. And as always, there is a report of transfers to and from technology for the month of October as well. That concludes tonight's presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Ms. Branch regarding the financial report? Yes, Ms. Banks Gray?
Thank you, Ms. Branch. Always a thorough report. Just as you said in that last statement that there, where you may see a slight increase, do we have a ballpark percentage of where we may be looking at?
I don't have a ballpark with me tonight, and that is because we're entering into a new two-year biennium. So, I, I don't want to give a number based on the previous direct aid template because I do expect it to look differently.
Thank you, ma'am. You're welcome.
Okay, any others? Thank you, Ms. Branch, as always.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, that concludes Superintendent and Staff reports.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Moving on to item four, hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. I received one. Ms. Bowles, I'd ask you to please read the protocol.
Okay. Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Comments shall relate to agenda items, or matters germane to the business or duties of the school board. Speaker, speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and are defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Our speaker is David Dietrich.
Good evening, Chairman Cherry, Superintendent Smith, members of the school board. My name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Grove. A few things about the agenda first, agenda items. One of the topics tonight was school division transformation. My question is, what are you transforming from and to? What is wrong with traditional learning methods? And, and I, I wonder, do any of you know what the performance was in math of students as a body 10 years ago versus today? Which is where the real emphasis should be in our school system. I haven't been to a single meeting or seen a single agenda where you actually focus on performance of, of the, of the students here. What is, shouldn't performance be the most important topic? And I noticed one of the important items that was discussed was equity. Why is equity always such a big part of our school discussion? Our founding fathers talked about equality. That word equity was never in their vocabulary. It didn't arise until very recently, oh, coincidentally with critical race theory. Why has that been inculcated into our school system? Regarding the OSHA mandate, think about this when you, as you go forward. It's an emergency temporary standard. Well, if it's a real emergency, why do we wait two months for it to be actually enforced? It can't be an emergency. And if it's temporary, how long are you willing to enforce this? A year, two years, 10 years? How long does that last? So, give that some thought. Question about the expenses. I, I noticed in the report tonight that the expenses were significantly higher this year than last year for the month of October. Why is that? Why should we be 10 to 20% higher in our expenses over that same period of time? Regarding school board security, why did you introduce additional security at the entrance for people coming in? Have you experienced physical threats from anybody who's attending these meetings? Otherwise, why are you wasting taxpayer money? Does it just make you feel important to have that additional security? We already have an armed security officer here. Why do we need more? Regarding face mask policy, last month at the meeting I attended, first of all, what is your policy? Does everyone have to wear a mask at all times? Well, at that meeting, Mayor Tuck happened to show up. He gets up to the podium, he takes his mask off. You did not enforce your policy when he did that. Is that because his COVID is less dangerous than everyone else's? Is it because of his black privilege? Is it just because of his privilege? Why is it that, that you don't enforce that equally for all people who come to these meetings? Regarding critical race theory now, as I brought up last month, you said, Mr. Cherry, to the superintendent, we don't teach critical race theory here. But I already brought up one example. Equity is a major component of critical race theory. You don't have to call it that name. It's a component of it, and there are others as well. This is, this, this is one of the reasons why people don't trust school boards because you say one thing and yet you do something else through obfuscation, deception, misdirection, whatever. So, the crux of the problem here is you're pushing equity on, on, on this school system when really, it- when really it demeans the very people you're trying to help. All those people, all, the students should be worried about their performance not being, not being given some benefit to, to graduate without actually performing. What, how does that really help serve them as an individual or serve the community? How does it make them better citizens by doing that? When you're teaching intersectionality, systemic racism, white privilege, white fragility? Why are all these terms being introduced into our, into our curriculum? The memo from the, from the Superintendent of Public Education, 05019 dated 22 February 19, actually specifies those components and yet you say you're not teaching it. That's the, that's the priority reading list that he provided to superintendents. Now, I don't have much time, so I'll have to save my comments for later, for next month. But in any case, I wish you all a very Merry Christmas and thank you much.
Moving on to item five deliberation, it consists of several items. 5.01, resolution conveying title to real property located adjacent to Phoebus High School to the city of Hampton. 5.02, revision of School Board Policy GDAB Employment Status Definitions. 5.03, review of the School Board Policy GDB Support Staff Probationary Period. 5.04, revision of School Board Policy GDBB Secondary Job Assignment Guidelines. 5.05, review of School Board Policy GDG Progressive Discipline. 5.06, review of School Board Policy GE Athletic and Co-Curricular Volunteers. 5.07, review of School Board Policy GEB-JOH Acceptance of Electronic Signatures and Records. Ms. Reeves has the first, the last, the one from two through seven. Ms. Ruth, are there any questions about any of these items for deliberation?
Do you need an explanation for the first one at all?
I saw you push your buzzer, we don't need to, but if you want to.
No, it's, it's fine. If everyone understands, that's fine.
Yes.
The only thing that I would ask is if you would consider moving it to action.
Moving 5.01?
Yes.
Okay, you want to give us a little brief explanation then?
Okay.
Thank you.
So, this is a resolution that's required by the code when you have determined that there's property that's surplus property. And in this case, there's two small parcels. One at 98 Warren Street and one at 75 Ireland Street, which is a tiny little piece at the corner that, that you are conveying back to the city. And when doing so, you need to pass this resolution and the resolution, you know, reads as, as it is. I did hand you out maps so you know exactly where it is. This is not property that's actually used in conjunction with Phoebus High School. It's just a little tiny strip across the street from Ireland, across Ireland Street from one of our parking lots. But the resolution needs to have been passed before the, the, the titles can be created by the city and then, then we would be conveying the title back to the city. And then the city will be doing, using it in conjunction with stormwater management purposes or other development reasons for those parcels to be developed, which is going to in turn help the tax base and whatever we get for schools. So that's sort of the, the underlying reason that this needs to get done.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Reeves. And I heard you say, Ms. Samuel, that's what you were listening for, that language. Okay, so, is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
No, 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 go ahead. No, no, I don't have a comment, I was gonna make a motion, but that's.
Oh, okay.
You're, you're welcome. I'll, I'll do it. Okay, Madam, Madam Chair, I, I move that we move deliberation item 5.01 to action item 8.01.
Second.
Wait. Are you moving it to 6.12 under items for action, Mr. Kilgore?
No, I'm moving it to new action items.
Okay.
Action eight.
And that's gonna make it 8.?
01.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and second by Dr. Mason that we move deliberation item 5.01, resolution conveying title to real property located adjacent to Phoebus High School to the city of Hampton, to additional items for action, which would be 8.01. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanga?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Right. Now, for the, back to the deliberation items, 5.02 through 5.07, are there any questions from board members? Okay, hearing none, those will be moved to action for our next meeting. Now, item six, items for action. It consists of 6.01, minutes of the School Board Training of November 10th, 2021. 6.02, deletion of School Board Policy GBL Personnel Records. 6.03, revision of School Board Policy GBN Staff Classification and Payment Plan. 6.04, review of School Board Policy GCAA Bus Driver Employment Recruit Requirements. 6.05, revision of School Board Policy GCB Staff Contracts. 6.06, review of School Board Policy GCBR Teacher Contract Schedules. 6.07, revision of School Board Policy GCBA Staff Salary Scales. 6.08, revision of School Board Policy GCBC Staff Benefits. 6.09, review of School Board Policy GCIR Transfers and Reassignments. 6.10, revision of School Board Policy GCL Professional Staff Development. And 6.11, revision of School Board Policy GCN Performance Evaluation. Is there a motion for these action items? Or do you want to take the first one? Separate. Yes, okay.
Chair, I move that we approve item 6.01.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Dr. Mason, seconded by Mr. Kilgore, that we approve item 6.01, minutes of the School Board Training of November 10th, 2021 for action. Any discussion from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanga?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye, motion carries. Is there an additional motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of action item 6.02 through 6.11 as a block.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Mason that we approve item 6.0 through, 6.02 through 6.11 as a block. Any discussion from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanga?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye, motion carries. Now, as we move on to item seven deliberation first read. Uh, first is Ms. Reeves has first four and five followed by Ms. Branch and then Ms. Ruth. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair. These are board policies, yeah, sections A, B, and C. So ABB is staff involvement and decision-making. It's got a MIRA policy, GBB. And there's some minor changes to the last paragraph in language because it actually didn't make much sense. So we divided up the sentence to make it more decipherable with regard to the fact that the policy doesn't limit opportunities for informal communication and it doesn't impugn the, the grievance procedure. For the next policy, which is ABBR, MIRA policy, GBBR, it is very, very minor language changes. We, we're taking out consistently, VSPA has recommended that we take out all the future and the shells and we're bringing it all down to present tense, so that's really all that's being done in that one. BDDH, which is also MIRA policy, KD. We're just changing one portion of the policy with regard to a procedural change. Policy CA, which is administrative goals. There were, no changes are recommended. And for policy CC, again, the policy language is updated to reflect that the organizational chart is going to be on the division's website and those are the major changes.
Ms. Reeves, had you asked any of those to be moved to action?
No, unless you wished.
No, I just didn't know. Okay.
I, I was not going to, I was gonna take it through.
I got it, I got it, okay, thank you. Okay. So the next, I do too. The next, Ms. Branch?
Yes, good evening again. Policy DB Annual Budget, five-year review, just some minor language changes where we're changing Shell to Will. Moving to Policy DC Unbalanced Policy, another five-year review. Changed the name of the Deputy Superintendent of Operations and Support to Chief Financial Officer and changed the language in Sections 2D and Sections 3 so that is in line with our current practice as it relates to assigning fund balance. Then moving on to our next policy, Policy DG Custody and Disbursement of School Funds. Five-year review, no recommended changes. Next policy, DGC School Activity Funds. This is a five-year review and changes were made based on VSPA updates. And we also included information for employees who are required to be bonded, who handle public funds and added a code reference as well. Moving to our next policy, Policy DI Financial Accounting and Reporting. This is a five-year review with no recommended changes. Next policy, DIA Reporting Per Pupil Calls. This is a VSPA update and there were just minor wording changes and an update to the code reference. Next policy, DJB Petty Cash Accounts. Five-year review and also VSPA updates and really just some minor language changes to align with the VSPA policy and current practice. Next policy being Policy DN Disposal of Surplus School Property. Five-year review, no recommended changes. And I believe, Robin, unless you want me to keep rolling?
Well, you can go, but I, I have her down.
Hello again.
Hey.
As I shared during the presentation, I would like to review Policy GF. This is a new policy and it is around the COVID-19 vaccination and testing. It is purposefully short and broad so that we can use it as an umbrella policy. The policy does include a requirement for the Superintendent or his designee to establish procedures in order to implement the emergency temporary standard. And the policy also outlines all of the information that will be included in those guidelines. Did I make my request? All right, I would request that the Board take action on this policy tonight given the timelines that we discussed during the presentation.
Okay, just clarification on one thing. On the, this policy sheet?
Yes.
It, it refers to it as GF and on the actual agenda is GB?
Yes, that was an error when it originally went out and it's been corrected.
Okay, so the correct policy is GB?
GF.
GF, okay. Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that we move item 7.14, New School Board Policy GF COVID-19 Vaccination and Testing to item number 8.02 under Additional Items for Action.
Second. Okay, it has been properly moved, but, Dr. Mason's seconded by Ms. Stephanie Afanga Jackson that we move item 7.14, which is New School Board Policy GF COVID-19 Vaccination and Testing to additional items for action, which would make it 8.02. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanga?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
So Ms. Doach, you can tell us about fundraising?
So Policy JL Fundraising, just a VSPA update to add cross-references at the end of the policy. And then the last policy being KGA Sales of School, On School Property. This was a five-year review and no recommended changes.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, that's Ms. Branch. We know that's Ms. Branch. Okay. Okay. Oh, no, okay. Now, moving on to item eight, Additional Items for Action. This will consist of 8.01, which is Resolution Conveying Title to Real Property Located Adjacent to Phoebus High School to the city of Hampton. And 8.02, which is New School Board Policy GF COVID-19 Vaccination and Testing. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I believe the Superintendent had recommended that we use some special motion language for the COVID policy.
He had, but then, but Ms. Reeves had said it wasn't necessary since we already have it.
I don't think it's necessary because he already has.
I would do that.
Okay, so it is going to... Okay, so he just takes action to put it into the pile of, of policies we've temporarily suspended.
Correct, given the emergency, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Hearing no more discussion, Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Ms. Afanga?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye, motion carries. Now, moving to item nine, information. The next meeting of the Hampton School Board actually will be in the form of our Community Priorities Workshop. That will be a virtual meeting on December 9th and we are just extremely blessed to have someone like Ann Bain who heads that up every year and makes sure that all the Ts are crossed and, and all the checks are made, so we, we appreciate that. On January 19th of the following year, 2022, will be the Board's Reorganizational Meeting, which will take, take place here at Jones-Magnin Middle School at 6:30 PM. Moving on to information, is there any information to come from the Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of items. One, to say that I'm hopeful that, that each member of, of our team, in terms of Hampton City Schools, that individuals had an opportunity to really get some rest and relaxation and to really reset during the Thanksgiving break. That started on November the 22nd and we're thankful for a very smooth transition in terms of our return on Monday of this week. So, again, thank you to the Board for your guidance and certainly your, your overall support to ensure that we're taking care of all members of our team in terms of Hampton City Schools, the staff. And so thank you for that. I would like to also just highlight the, the naming of... I would like to also just highlight the naming of the Aberdeen Park. As you're aware, that on November the 15th, the Park of Aberdeen was named the Lyndwood Butch Harper at Aberdeen in memory of Mr. Butch Harper for his devoted service to the young people throughout our city and especially in our Aberdeen community, and so.
It was a great event.
And absolutely.
It was very touching, and it really was.
And so thank you to members of the board for your attendance, and certainly staff members for your participation in preparing, and the clerk of the board who was present and also the school board attorney. So we're grateful for the turnout that we had for the naming of Aberdeen Park.
And former board members.
And former board members who were also present.
Exactly.
Phoebus High School, the Phantom Football Team. The Phantom Football Team is the Class 3A Regional Champions, and they will play at the Darling Stadium on Saturday, December the 4th, against, I think, Brentsville High School for the state semifinal. And so a win for the Phantoms will take them to Liberty University for the state final. And so we will await that on the December 4th game. We have winter break I know ahead of us, right? And will begin on December the 20th. But until such time, of course, we have so much in front of us in terms of teaching and learning, and we will remain focused. But we look forward and wish all members of our team, again, the very best when we enter into our winter break in that regard as well. I would like to, my final comment, again, just to highlight that we are good stewards of the financial resources that we're responsible for. And I appreciate the board in terms of your involvement and the fact that our chief financial officer continues to provide the board with detailed information relative to the finances of the school division. As you'll note on the memo from the chief financial officer dated November the 18th, included in the board packet expenditures and encumbrances total $89,250,699, and are 18.6% higher when compared to the prior fiscal year, already addressed by the CFO. The difference, as she noted in her memo to the board, is primarily due to increased operations and maintenance and technology encumbrances that were carried forward from FY 2021 to FY 2022. And the board receives on a continuous basis detailed report as to those specific expenditures, as well as the memo and so forth. So I just want to draw, again, I know I don't have to do that for the board because you have it in your packet, but for our viewing audience, for clarity, to make certain that the full context of the information provided by the CFO stays before us and to highlight that the board receives from the CFO a very detailed financial report.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And I think, you know, we're all just real positive that Hampton City Schools is in a great financial position and that we have someone like Ms. Branch leading the way to make sure that this board is kept informed of everything and all things budget, and we appreciate that. Any other comments from board members? Yes, Mr. Samuels?
I have a question for Dr. Smith as it relates to that state championship game that we will be playing in at Liberty. Are you considering sponsoring a bus trip up there, Dr. Smith?
I'll certainly get with Ms. Beth Mayer on that. I have no further information on that this evening.
I remember the last sponsored bus trip. You remember that, going to the game? Lord, I thought I was going to have a heart attack. Yes, Dr. Mason?
I just want to give kudos to the Hampton University marching band who performed in the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade and represented our community very well. And we have several Hampton City School students who are marching in the band that participated in that program, and they did an excellent job.
They did, it was outstanding, yes.
One more thing, I just want to acknowledge Dr. Cajiano. He was one of the participant or the panelists on the lead Peninsula presentation this afternoon to the participants that are participating in that Peninsula lead. So thank you so much for your participation in serving on behalf of Hampton City School. It is my understanding from detailed information or from intel that you did a fantastic job. Kudos.
Thank you for that also, Ms. Herb was there also, yes.
Yes. Any other comments from board members? Okay, let me just read a little something. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Al-Safir.
I just wanted to say one more thing. I think it'll be a closing thought before I pass it to you back. But coming from the student voice and the student perspective, we have never seen something like this, that this generation, this generation of students that come from HCS, from Hampton City Schools, have been the most engaged yet after COVID especially. We have been the most engaged, we have been the most seeking and willing to, to be so determined in class activities and extracurricular opportunities and just go out to our way and to find those opportunities. And it comes from where policy originates. And that policy originates from where the school board, of course. So thank you to everyone, you know, for bringing me on with this journey. Thank you to also everyone who presented there tonight. I also want to say that if you are a student, family member, friend, or anyone who's part of the Hampton community, I want you to really reflect and take a really true break during the winter break that is coming up and convene your thoughts and step back and always look at the bigger picture because there are always going to be opportunities for you no matter what, and thank you.
So well stated, thank you, Mohammed, that was awesome.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. You know, when Dr. Smith was introduced as the superintendent to start us off with our superintendent and staff reports, you might have heard me make the comment about he keeps winning awards and I don't know how he does it. So let me just read some, I got his little picture here. Congratulations to Dr. Jeffrey Smith, Superintendent for Hampton Public School District, for receiving the Urban League of Hampton Roads Martin Luther King Community Leaders Education Award. And that's our very own superintendent. Congratulations, Dr. Smith.
Thank you. Hats off to our staff and certainly to the board. So thank you for your continued support and engagement in this important work. So thank you.
Well, you know, they say that success starts from the top down. And I think that's why, Mohammed, we have so many successful students, I really do. Would you agree?
Yes, I agree, I agree 100%.
Yeah, because it's what's exemplified from the top down. And whether that's the board, whether that's a principal in his building or a director in his or her department, I think we are very, very blessed in that. And sometimes when you've got things going well, you kind of take it for granted until you look around and hear other things, then you know, you know how well you are. I saw somebody said the other day, said, you know, talking about crossing the line. They said, "Some people don't know what the line is until they actually see it."
That's right.
So I think we've been very blessed in that regard. So thank you again for your comments, thank you, Dr. Smith.
No, thank you.
And any other comments from board members? Hearing none, I heard somebody say, "I'm hungry." Okay. So with that being said, meet in a germ.